Y más que nada como apoyo emocional, una guía. Te da una visión diferente de cómo es ser papá aquí, quizás en este país.
Es algo, un bonito programa porque pues es buena persona la señora y los ha atendido muy bien.
Pensé que nada más iba a ser un programa de orientación quizás para los nuevos padres, pero creo que nos llevamos una linda sorpresa porque Gaby es una persona muy cercana a nosotros, es como parte de nuestra familia, siempre ha estado dispuesta a ayudarnos y a escucharnos con nuestras dudas sobre la paternidad. Y en nuestro caso, que estamos solos en este país, ha sido como de mucha ayuda.
Es un gran apoyo para nuevos padres y más aún si están en nuestra situación que somos extranjeros, que nuestra familia y amigos como dice Carla están en otro país lejos. Entonces sí viene muy bien el programa para apoyarse tanto emocional como anímicamente y bueno, en varios aspectos del programa que nos ayuda a seguir adelante con esta nueva aventura.
Te ayuda como a ver los distintos recursos que tiene la comunidad para nuevos papás, entonces creo que es de gran ayuda.
No queda mucho lo que agregar, pero lo veo de la misma forma. Que hemos aprendido algunas cosas aquí pues los han ayudado como este programa los ha ayudado para seguir creciendo a la bebé como con buenos consejos y así.
Así y creo que también ha sido muy importante el tema de apoyarnos con el libro y saber como qué actividades hacer con Máximo de acuerdo a su edad, cómo estimularlo, cómo cuidarlo de los peligros de la casa, como cosas que uno como papá nuevo no...
No conoce.
No conoce claro.
Pues a mí me gustaría que lo siguiéramos visitando aquí en la biblioteca de Covelo. Está tranquilo y muy bonito aquí.
Cuando nos podemos reunir a comunicamos por Zoom o una llamada telefónica o por texto.
Donde nos visité, porque ha sido nuestra casa, a veces nosotros vamos a Willets y puede ser en el parque. Gavillega como hacemos un resumen de cómo ha ido nuestra semana o qué hemos hecho de nuevo, cómo va el trabajo. Luego hacemos las actividades del libro, vemos si podemos hacer un juguetito nuevo para Máximo. A veces ella lo evalúa cómo está su sentido motriz o qué he aprendido de nuevo, nuevas palabras y jugamos un ratito y conversamos.
A mí personalmente también me ayudó mucho obtener mi licencia de conducir.
To order and ask for roll call please from our clerk.
Commissioner Pollan, here. Commissioner Jones. Commissioner Richards.
Here.
Commissioner Wedeman, Chair Babini.
Here.
Thank you.
Alright. Agenda item number two, has the meeting today been, has proper notice been established?
All matters have been properly legally noticed.
Thank you.
To the chair, this is Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski. I want to clarify that for item 6A, the item was properly noticed and published in the newspaper. In terms of posting it to Sequanet, it was done a couple of days late. So on that item, we can choose to start that hearing today because it was noticed, but we will have to continue it for action until the next meeting on June 19th.
Okay, thank you. And agenda item number three, do we have a director's report today?
Thank you, Julia Crogg, Planning and Building Services Director. I have a brief report for you. So first up, I want to, we've publicly noticed this and just make the commission aware. Our Fort Bragg Office of Planning and Building is being relocated. So we will be closed to the public next week, June 9th through 13th. While we make that transition, our new office location is going to be at 752 South Franklin Street in Fort Bragg. So that's the Avalos Center for folks that may be familiar with it. So there's that notice and then also we've been holding stakeholder meetings for the inland low intensity camping regulations that was previously discussed with the commission during the zoning code update process. And so we've held meetings in Fort Bragg, Anderson Valley, and we were in Covelo last night. We have Willets next week on Wednesday and then there will be Ukiah the Wednesday after that on June 18th. The meeting in Ukiah also has a virtual Zoom participation option.
I had a quick question, how are those being, like that information being given out to the public?
Sure, so we did a press release and then also those were blasted out on the social media pages for the county.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Any other questions from? And then do we have any public comment on the director's report today? None in the room? Do we have any raised hands online? Your mic not working either? We were having mic issues before when Russ and I first got here this morning with everybody.
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Yeah, and apologies again, we were having mic issues I think on every computer this morning when we first got here. Okay, moving on to agenda item number four, matters from the public, public expression. Members of the public are welcome to address the planning commission on items not listed on the agenda but within the jurisdiction of the planning commission. The planning commission is prohibited by law from taking action on matters not on the agenda. Individuals wishing to address the planning commission under matters from the public may do so in person via email or Zoom. If any members of the public logged into the Zoom meeting wish to speak under public expression, please use the raised hand feature to allow staff to add you to this meeting. Do we have any requests for telecomment under public expression?
I don't have any requests.
Okay, do we have any members of the public in the room who wish to speak under public expression for items not on the agenda today? Seeing none, okay. And we are going to move on to agenda item five, which is our consent calendar, which is approval of our planning commission meetings from our May 1st, 2025 meeting. Do we have any comments from the commissioners on our consent calendar? Seeing none, do we have any public comment in the room for our consent calendar? Seeing none, any comments online for our consent calendar?
None online.
Okay, do we have a motion on approval of the minutes for our May 1st meeting from the commission?
I'll move that we approve the consent calendar.
I'll second. I did, I seconded. And then can we, do we roll call vote for approval?
Okay, Commissioner Babini.
Yes.
Chair, Commissioner Pollan.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones.
Yes.
Commissioner Richards.
Yes.
Motion passed unanimously.
Thank you. Alright, item six, so item six is our regular calendar and our first item today is U underscore 2024 dash 0004, which is the use permit to construct a new 65 foot tall cellular antenna tower with a monopine type design and four antenna sectors with three antennas per sector. This is the item that Kudrowski discussed that was properly noticed for our meeting and can be heard today. However, we cannot make, take any action on the item until the following meeting, which is a date certain of June 19th. I know that, I believe the applicant is present online and I wanted to make sure that if there was anyone in the room who wanted to speak today, we could discuss. So we do have folks online. Yeah, I saw two as well, so I'm happy if we want to move forward with hearing the item, just know that we cannot take any action on the item today. Do we have? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing then, move forward after our housekeeping items. Have there been any correspondence or telephone calls received?
All items have been posted to the website.
Great, can we have staff presentation please? And just real quick, do we, can we confirm that the applicant is online for this item?
I don't see that they're joined on the Zoom, but they may be watching on the YouTube as well. But it looks like we only have one attendee on the Zoom at this time and that is not them.
Okay, quick question to county council then. With our prior discussion on the item, do we want to proceed with the full staff report and everything? Or do we want to just hear public comment on the item today since we have people here?
Deputy County Counsel Matthew Kudrowski, I had spoken earlier with their counsel and expected them to be here. So if we could try and see if staff can reach out to their agent briefly, maybe in a five minute break.
Yeah, that works for me. I just know, I want to have everyone present that should be for any hearing comments that are in the room. Alright, thank you. Five minutes, come back at 9:47.
When I first realized that I was going to be a parent, I was super scared. After two or three weeks of meeting in the home visiting program, I was totally comfortable with the fact that I was going to have a baby. Yes, I was still scared, but at the same time, I felt like I had some sense of strength behind me.
If I didn't have those resources that Jeanette provided me, I think it would be harder now.
I got into the program and I realized like, oh, this is, this is nice. And now look at me, I'm a, I work at a family resource center with parents and families, all this stuff.
I'm so grateful that I got the opportunity to meet my home visitor because without her, I think that I would be 10 steps behind from where I'm at right now.
Pero pues aquí pues ya los enseñan un poquito más cosas que uno no sabía. Como, como cuidarla, como desarrollarla, como educarla y pues es algo bien porque pues cosas que yo no sabía pues ya usted no las dijo y todo como consejos. Y pues muchas cosas que se aprendieron.
Because I don't know what's normal for a 22 month old baby or an 18 month old baby, you know? When we get together, we usually discuss and get some progress made with the baby. It makes me feel comfortable and I associate my parenting with her, my home visitor telling me, yeah, this is, this is going great.
So it's nice to know where they're at, what stage they're at for every parent and also to give again your children that head start in education.
If I had any questions with her, just call her up on the phone. You know, it was very relatable, very personal. And you know, with her getting to know my kids, you know, she got to kind of help guide me along the way. I mean, there were so many cool things that I've learned.
I went from a very like rough type of life, I was homeless and she was able to help me get into school. And I actually have enough credits to graduate with a business degree right now.
Thing I really want to mention just that I'm grateful that I took advantage because it's something that has put me in touch with my child or closer to my child in her development.
I want other people and parents to know that the home visiting is not something that you should be afraid of. It's actually something that is needed.
Yeah, because she's not just here for her, she's here to help with all of it. She helped me create a safe space where I feel comfortable enough to ask for help.
Don't be afraid to take that step, like don't be afraid to get help. It's always okay to have extra support.
I suggest that I would say, give it a try. You got nothing to lose, it's free, there's some perks, you know, they got some great resources.
Personally, I think everybody could benefit from the home visiting program.
Are you prepared? We're the Office of Emergency Services and we're committed to providing the most up to date and accurate information so that you and your family can stay safe during an emergency. Visit MendoReady.org, it's our one stop shop for emergency information. You can sign up for emergency alerts, find your pre-established evacuation zone on our current emergencies map and find hazard and preparedness information.
Imagine you're faced with a disaster such as a wildfire and you're ordered to evacuate. I'll bet you wish you had more time in that moment. Now's your chance to buy yourself that time. Sign up for Nixle and Mendo Alerts on our website, MendoReady.org. Do it today.
If you want your family to be as resilient as possible, it's important to take some time today and visit MendoReady.org where you can look up your pre-established evacuation zones on our current emergencies map. You can also find important tools to help maintain your situational awareness such as the Alert California Wildfire Cameras and the Caltrans Road Conditions Cameras. We hope you'll take some time today to prepare so that your family can be Mendo-ready. Thank you.
Great, okay, so after staff has reached out, we're going to move to a different item first. See if we can get the applicant for 6A to call in. If not, we'll come back to that item after this one. So for now, we're going to move on to item 6B, which is permit number REC underscore 2024 0003, Parker 10 Mile Ranch Reclamation Plan Renewal and Modification to Extend Existing Hillside Quarry Mining Operation for an Additional Five Years. See, I'm going to open the public hearing for this item. Has there been any correspondence or telephone calls received for this item?
All correspondence have been posted to the website.
Thank you. Alright, we have staff presentation for this item. Thank you.
Okay, good morning. Dirk Larson, project planner. So the applicant is GeoAggregates and the agent is Compass Land Group. And as you indicated, this is a request to renew and modify an existing reclamation plan for a continuing mining operation. The project is located about eight miles north of Fort Bragg, a couple of miles east of State Highway 1 off the 10 Mile Hall Road. The property or the project is located on a 622 acre private property of which about 15 acres encompasses this mining operation. What you're looking at there is the lower circle, that's the quarry location. The processing plant is a half a mile to a mile up the hall road. Just a site view of the quarry itself, just to kind of give you perspective, the 10 Mile Hall Road access is taken directly off the hall road there. The reclaimed area is highlighted here and there is active mining operation continuing as they extract material. There is this road here that travels through the timberland and does connect into the processing. Just a little background on this project. A use permit was approved in 93 for extraction processing of up to 50,000 cubic yards of material. A couple of years after that, the operator requested vested rights, which was initially denied by the planning commission. They appealed that decision, that, the appeal was upheld and then the board, went to the board who also upheld the PC and staff determination. Apparently with additional information submitted, the board reversed their decision and granted vested rights. So once that occurred, under Mendocino County Code Section 22.16060, such operations no longer require a use permit but must have an approved reclamation plan. So with that, in 2004, they applied for another rec plan, processing again up to 20 to 40,000 cubic yards and processing 51,000 cubic yards, excuse me, 20 to 40,000 cubic yards of material extracted. This project expired in 2017, sorry, let me back up here. And then they again applied for a rec plan to renew. And in this case in 2018, wanted to modify the final slope slightly. The renewal here was just for an additional five years, that was approved. And I also wanted to note here that this operation falls under SMARA and just briefly for those who aren't familiar with SMARA, Surface Mining Reclamation Act requires that all such mining sites under their authority are inspected annually. We, the lead agency, perform those inspections, do site inspections with the operator, confirm that they're following all conditions, there are adequate erosion measures in place and we make recommendations for additional BMPs if required. So this is a picture here of the processing plant site. This operator over the last several years has been reclaiming this site. They are no longer processing material here. What you're looking at here is the grading. The next steps for them are installation of topsoil and then hydro seeding. And then we will be monitoring this for a couple of years to assure they are achieving the success rate identified in the plan. So just briefly more on the inspection, also operators are required to provide us with financial assurance cost estimates. And that, those estimates are based on the operation, the annual operation plus full reclamation. And then we kind of review all that, we ship it off to the State Department of Conservation, Division of Mine Reclamation, who has an opportunity to comment, review and comment that. I can't comment on that. And then once approved, we require the operator to secure a financial assurance mechanism called the FAM, bond or CD in most cases. And then we, that's for that reporting year and it starts all over the next year. This request is really coming up as a result of a partnership, if you will, with the Nature Conservancy. The lower red circle there is a wetland restoration project the Nature Conservancy is undertaking on the south fork of the 10 Mile River. Our quarry, our operator is just a couple of miles up the road. As part of that enhancement project, they're removing a lot of overburdened material from the wetlands. And the operator has agreed to place that material onto the quarry site to use as fill for their final contoured slopes. It's kind of a convenient partnership because it doesn't require Nature Conservancy to pay transportation costs to take elsewhere in the county or out of county frankly. And transporting material will be done on private roads. Just a brief illustration of the 2018 reclamation plan. Again, they were approved for a slight modification to the final slopes. As you can see by this diagram, to the right here is the current request for modification and this will allow them to kind of incorporate this fill material. As you can see, the current request will kind of create a more gradual slope, a gentle slope, I think, which is kind of fits the character of the area. What you're looking at here is a photo from last year's inspection of the reclaimed slopes at the quarry. The actual modification will be occurring kind of to the right of this slide. But just to give you an idea, they've kind of already reclaimed the upper portion of this, which will not be impacted by this modification. It's to occur to the lower bench area. There will be storm structures in there and a retention pond at the bottom of that slope to capture any erosion.
Can I interrupt for a minute?
Yeah.
Because I'm getting confused about reclaimed and restored. The reclamation usually means extraction.
No, in fact, I was, that's interesting you bring that up. I was going to, I actually took a definition of reclamation right from the Division of Mine Reclamation.
Okay, let's hear it.
Just to share it for you. Reclamation is a combined process by which adverse environmental effects of surface mining are minimized in mined lands or returned to a beneficial end use. End uses may be open space, wildlife habitat, agriculture, or residential and commercial development. Some components of reclamation include practices that control erosion and sedimentation, stabilize slopes and avoid and repair impacts to wildlife habitat. The final step is usually topsoil replacement and revegetation with a suitable plant species. So all our rec plans do have revegetation phases which require specific species. So usually they're natural to the area, so that's what's occurring here. This operation has been mining since before the 1950s and they are now kind of to the point where they just want to kind of fully reclaim and shut down this operation. Now, with the vested right, they could mine into the future, but at this point, they don't really have a plan to do that. They, as I say, for the last several years have been working on reclamation and shutting down this site. So does that help? Okay, so with that, kind of the findings and recommendations from staff. The extension or extending the expiration date of the rec plan by five years will not represent a negative impact in this area. The project will continue to require the operator to restore the land based on the guidelines of the reclamation plan. The approved reclaimed end use of the site is open space and will not be affected by the proposed modification to the final slopes. An initial study was prepared for this project to identify potentially significant impacts pursuant to SEQA. An adoption of a negative declaration with required mitigation measures is recommended by staff. It's consistent with the local coastal plan, general plan and zoning of the property. And staff is recommending approval of this project based on the findings made in the staff report and pursuant to Mendocino County Code Section 20.532, along with the conditions of approval included therein. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Do we have questions from commissioners on, to staff or from the presentation?
I have just a weird question and that is, it's strange to me that this doesn't require a CDP. I mean, I understand why you would say it doesn't require a coastal development use permit. So just, I mean, unless you just have a carve out for this in your LCP, but maybe you do. It just seems strange to me.
Yeah, I think I'd indicated in the presentation that once vested rights were granted, by, by a kind of, and we kind of follow Department of Mine Reclamation, Department of Conservation guidelines, but in our codes, once vested rights are granted, you no longer be required to have a...
Yeah, but I'm differentiating use permit from a coastal development permit because it's in the coastal zone.
Well, I mean...
I'm just curious to me because it's a pretty significant amount of grading to be able to come back for and not request.
Sure, thank you. So we have, you know, there's a separate chapter in the county code. It's titled, and I'm just pulling it up, sorry, so I want to give you the right reference. It's titled 22.16, which is Surface Mining and Reclamation. And that is part of the certified local coastal program. So I believe that's the pathway because this is associated with the reclamation component, that it is not triggering the need for the CDP.
Got it.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments from Commissioner?
Just to clarify, so they will be doing no further extraction from this site?
Well, with vested rights, they are allowed to extract into the future without a use permit. But as I say, I think the intent here is to reclaim the quarry and the processing plant is gone now. So it's possible that they would extract some material for future routes on logging roads, for example. But we do have the agent here today who may be able to answer the question.
Right, I think part of the issue is CDFW didn't allow them to continue diverting water from 10 Mile Creek. And so they lost their ability to have a processing plant there, so then the quarry doesn't really have value.
Right, right, thank you.
Any other comments or questions to staff from commissioners? Seeing none, okay. Do we have an applicant presentation or do we have the applicant who wishes to speak today? Please state your name at the podium.
Good morning, I'm Jordan Main, I'm a land use consultant assisting GeoAggregates and we do not have a prepared presentation but are happy to answer any question.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, great, thank you. Do we have any comments from commissioners to the applicant? Seeing none, thank you so much. All right, at this time, I'm going to open up for public comment. Do we have any public comment in the room who wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, do we have any public comment on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Do we have any final remarks from staff? Okay, do we have any final remarks from applicant? Okay, thank you. Do we have any final comments from commission before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, great. Okay, if this item is before the commission, public comment is no longer permitted. Do we have any discussion further? Otherwise, I invite a motion from the commission.
Sure, I'll make a motion, since this is in my little district, and I want to compliment the applicant on working with the land trust to do a beneficial reuse of dredged spoils from the river. I think that's great, reduces transportation costs, good for everybody. So I will recommend that the Planning Commission adopt a negative declaration and grant reclamation plan renewal and modification, REC 2024-0003, for the project as proposed by the applicant based on the facts and findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the resolution that I'm now recommending we adopt.
Do we have a second?
I'll second as long as I don't have to repeat that.
You do not.
You do not.
That's the joy of being the second.
Can we have roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Pollan?
Yes.
Chair Bobini?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you so much. All right, everybody, we are going to go back to Item 6A. I just wanted to check with staff to see if we were able to.
The agent is in attendance now, virtually.
Great. So then we can proceed with regular item.
The hearing.
Deputy County Councilman Matthew Kudrowski will introduce the item, have the staff presentation, give a chance for any questions, and then we can start public comment, and we'll continue the public hearing.
Okay. It's the tallness. Okay. Item 6A, U underscore 2024-0004, Selco Partnership, Matt Moore, use permit to construct a new 65-foot-tall cellular antenna tower with a monopine-type design and four antenna sector with three antennas per sector. I am going to open the public hearing on this item, and then I will re-ask, since we came back to it, if there has been any correspondence on this item.
All items have been posted to the public website.
Thank you. And then staff, if we can have a presentation, please.
Good afternoon, or good, good morning. Planning, this is Keith Gronadike, planner with Mendocino County. This is Use Permit 2024-0004, Selco Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless. The applicant agent is, is actually Matt Moore. He's with the Selco Partnership. Here's the project location and aerial photograph. The tower would be located right about where the cursor is, right in here. There's a garage or a barn or something. It's going to be demolished, and then there's a single-family house up here where the cursor is. It's located in Willets. Here's some photo simulations from the applicant, showing existing on the top and proposed on the bottom. The tower is not visible from, this is, oh, I'm seeing, Road, Sherwood Road, I think it's Sherwood Road. And here's another view of it, the same situation. And here's the site plan, showing what I showed on the aerial. This is a timberline road. It's a, it's a private road, and then access to the property down here on the lower south side. And the tower would be located right off the timberline. It's about 790, or 60 feet from Sherwood Road to the tower site. And here's an elevation of the tower. It's a monopine design, roughly, I think it's 60 feet tall. The antennas would be visually camouflaged by the faux pine branches and the equipment area down below. And this is site photographs. This is that shed that our garage, I was talking about, whatever you want to call it. It's pretty dilapidated, it's slated to be removed. And here's another site photo, lots of pine trees, as you can see, so the tower would fit in with the surrounding foliage. One more site plan, or a site photo. And all of the acquired findings for this project have been made, and staff has completed an initial study for the proposed project in accordance with SEQA, and determined that the project would not have potential significant effects on the environment. As discussed in the initial study, the proposed project could result in some impacts, however, these were considered to be less than significant. Staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a negative declaration for the project and grant Use Permit 0 underscore 2024-0004 for the project based on the facts and findings and subject to the conditions of approval contained in the resolution and Exhibit A. Any questions from Planning Commission?
Thank you. Do we have any questions from commissioners on the presentation?
I'm just curious what the current use of the site is. It looks like sort of a hodgepodge residential mash pit.
Yeah, it looks like it's a single-family residence, a modular, mobile home type situation with some outbuildings on the site.
And then.
Is there anybody living there? Or they just?
I believe there is. They'd have to have the property owner's approval for the tower, so.
No, but I saw the, I think your address was in Ukiah, so I was just curious if anybody was actually up, living in the house.
Yeah, the project applicant would probably be better able to answer that question.
Since we do have the applicant online, I'm going to invite the applicant to speak as well.
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and thank you for having me here. My name is Matthew Moore. I am an authorized agent of Verizon Wireless and Selco Partnership, an applicant for this project. In terms of the landlord's overall living situation, I believe they go back and forth, but their primary residence is in Ukiah. In terms of a presentation, I did not have one prepared for today. I was kind of advised that this was going to be continued as a matter of course due to some noticing issues, but I am more than happy to answer any questions you guys might have.
Thank you. Do we have any questions from commission for applicant?
Now, I'm, sorry about that. Anyway, the question is more just, can you help me interpret one of the slides? It was the current versus expanded coverage cell service, and I was just, I think I'm misinterpreting the colors.
Staff may be able to assist as well. Are we able to pull up that slide?
Yeah, there's like a before and after, anticipated app, coverage app. Cell Tower comes in. Just want to make sure I'm understanding it correctly, because like a lot of change.
Yeah, and what we're looking at is, so areas with no color represent no coverage. I mean, there's a lot of topographical challenges in this area, and so you kind of have to get creative with the solutions and the placement of the towers. Red coverage is going to represent good outdoor coverage. Yellow coverage indicates outdoor and in-car coverage, and then green represents indoor, outdoor, in-car, all that stuff.
Thank you. Do we have any other questions from the commission for applicant? Seeing none. Okay. At this time, we're going to move on to public comment. The commission will now hear public comment on this item. The commission will start with public comments in the room, and then hear from telecommenters who are connected virtually via Zoom. When called to speak, please state your name for the record. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Speakers are asked to please address their comments to the meeting chair and to refrain from using profanity or engaging in conversations with members of the audience or staff. We have members of the public who would like to speak. Please state your name, thank you.
Dina Williams, I'm a member of the board on the Sullivan Homeowners Association. I do, we do have some concerns, as the board has addressed today, about, it is a heavily forest area. There are already a lot of living, or that does not live, a lot of abandoned building, campers, brush down one part of the property. We are concerned about the environmental impact and the risk of fire with propane tank, cell phone tower, rest.
Thank you. Do we have any other public comment in the room?
Hello, my name's Alair Nieto. I'm a adjacent property owner to where the cell tower is going to be. I really don't want the cell tower there. You know, power does go out frequently on, up there, you know, especially during winter time. I don't want to hear a generator all night. You know, fire safety also, also, are they going to help us fix the road? Because we pay road dues, you know? Is that going to be something they're going to help with? Or, you know, that's my concern. And I don't have much. So yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Do we?
Address, there's people on the board that have been on that property for, the concern for the home, for the property, for the, all the cell phone towers. I understand that the home had an electric inspection. They are going to run electric to the cell phone tower with backup generators. There is a concern that cell phone tower or the electric inspection, that is, because we're in the highest fire zone in the county, so the fire is alarming all property.
Thank you. All right. Do we have any commenters on Zoom?
There are no hands raised in Zoom, but it looks like Susan Leo typed in a question asking, what were the impacts to the tower that staff determined were not significant?
Okay, thank you. All right, do we have any final remarks from staff? Okay.
No further remarks.
Thank you. And then, do we have any final remarks from the applicant today?
Sure, just to be brief here, I do appreciate the concerns of the public always, but I would say that for safety measures and fire safety measures, this will apply by every, you know, local and state fire code that there is. It'll be reviewed by the fire department and approved before, you know, any construction is started, before the building permit is issued or anything like that. In terms of the generator, it is mandated by the CPUC that these facilities do have backup generators, just, you know, if power does go out, you know, and something's going wrong, they, they want the towers to keep running for as long as possible so that people can stay in contact.
Okay, do we have any additional questions for staff from, or the applicant from the commissioners?
Just looking at the photos of the property, it does seem that it's in a pretty bad, like, need of some code enforcement or some remediation. And also just hearing from the neighbors that there are vehicles that are, have been smashed elsewhere on the property. I'd like staff and the commission to consider adding a special condition that before this facility can be erected, that all code violations would be eliminated from the property. That includes abandoned, smashed vehicles, inoperable vehicles, and structures that are not permitted. And I think that would help the neighbors, I think, a little bit with their concern for fire, and just help the environment up there. And that's typical, like normally, people have to clean up their stuff before they get permits for new stuff.
And I guess just to clarify, so if there are no current violations on the property, are, is your request still to have them be cleaned up, or would it be only if there's violations currently on the property?
Well, looking at those structures, I can tell, just by looking at them, that they're in violation of the building code, so.
If I may, through the chair, maybe just a rephrasing the condition that everything must meet building standards rather than tying it to a code case.
That's fine, but I would also, I mean, I think the abandoned vehicles thing isn't a building standard. That is a nuisance condition, so maybe making the special condition be to eliminate all nuisance, nuisance conditions on the property. That way, it's not tied to a code complaint, but, and just get fixed.
And Julia Crock, Planning and Building Services Director, I think since we know this item will need to be continued before final action because of the SEQA noticing timelines, that'll give staff an opportunity to hear your concern and be able to work through that and come back to the commission at the next meeting with some updates on those.
Thank you. Okay. Did we have any other comments from our commissioners? While this project was publicly noticed for this meeting, due to minor errors in the posting to the state clearinghouse, the notice period for state agencies will not conclude until June 18th, 2025. As such, this item must be continued to the June 19th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting for any final action. I will invite at this time a motion for continuation to a date certain of June 19th, 2025 Planning Commission meeting from the commissioners today.
I move that we continue this hearing to June 19th, 2025.
I will second that. Can we get roll call vote, please?
Chair Bobini?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Pollan?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. And thank you to folks who came in, in person today to comment as well.
Sorry, and Chair Bobini, if I can just comment to the folks that had come to the hearing, just to know that there won't be an additional public notice sent out, since this item was continued to a date certain, so it will be reheard on June 19th during the Planning Commission. That, the agenda will be posted, and this meeting is your notification that this item will be continued to that date. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I'm orienting myself, because we bounced around a little bit here on our agenda. I believe we're now on Item 6C, AP 2024-0033, Yasmin Mendoza Lopez, Administrative Permit to Host Outdoor Events and Weddings for Up to 300 Guests. The applicant has requested a continuance of this matter to the July 3rd, date certain July 3rd, 2025 meeting. Did want to see if there was anybody here to comment. I don't see the applicant. Do we have anyone on Zoom to comment for this item?
There are no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay.
And if I may, through the chair, we would just also want to confirm, July 3rd is the day before the July 4th holiday. So I think before the commission discusses any continuance, I just want to ensure there's going to be a quorum of the commission present for that day, for any continuance.
I guess, yeah, let's hear from the commission if they have any opposition to maybe changing that date maybe to the following meeting. Because do we have any items currently for that one? Or are we not out that far yet? It doesn't look like we're out that far yet for July.
There's no items posted yet for that.
Yeah.
Apologies, there's no items posted yet for that agenda, but if this item was continued to that date, staff would have the ability to either potentially have another item on that agenda or provide a presentation to the commission as well.
Michael Behave, I think it's because we were both on there. Does the commission have any opposition to the July 3rd date?
None from. I won't be able to attend that meeting, so I would prefer that we do it another date, because it's an important item that I would love to comment on, but I'm but one human here.
I will be here, but I want to make sure we have quorum. I will be here, but I want to make sure we have quorum, because if there's only, say, the three of us, that always tends to push that we could not have quorum, and I would like to have a date certain, just if we're moving forward.
I'm totally flexible, so.
Okay. Seeing that we do have commissioners who would like to be present for that, can we request to, what day would that be?
The commission could instead choose to continue to the meeting following the July 3rd, which is July 17th.
Okay. Let's do that. Do we have a motion then from the commission to change the request and postpone the meeting to a date certain of July 17th? I'm happy to make that motion. I, I make a motion to postpone our item 6C to a date certain of July 17th, 2025, so that the commission can be present. Do we have issue with that if the applicant isn't here to comment?
Deputy County Councilman Matthew Kudrowski, if they're, we'll, we'll reach out to them, and if it's second continuance, then so be it.
Okay.
Do we know why this, it was fairly late that this continuance came in, I think, I mean, as of yesterday, I think, at least, as I was looking at it, we were planning on hearing this item. Do we know why there was a last-minute request for continuance?
Planner Keith Gronadike, the applicant, reached out to me, I think on last week, I believe, asking for a continuance, because she wouldn't be available for today's meeting.
It is graduation for a lot of the schools, I'm wondering if that is partially why this week is hard for folks. Okay.
I'll second.
We have a second.
I'll second the motion that we continue to the July 17th.
Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Pollan?
Yes.
Chair Babini?
Yes.
Commissioner Jones?
Yes.
Commissioner Richards?
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. All right, moving on to agenda number seven, matters from staff. Do we have any matters from staff today?
No matters from staff, thank you.
Seeing none. The comment on the Juneteenth, I was actually curious about, because for some reason I thought that the offices were all closed on June 19th, but I guess that is not the case.
We have not been, I'm just pulling up our holiday calendar just to confirm that.
I have this like vague memory of the board wanting to make that a holiday like a year or two ago, and I wasn't sure if that changed or something.
To the best of my knowledge, it's not been added to the holiday calendar.
Okay, just recognition of it as a holiday?
Yeah, just give me one moment here. So yeah, no, it is not listed on the county's published holiday schedule, so.
Well, I know I have work still on the 19th, that changed from last year, so I wasn't sure if that was a recent change or not. Yes, uh-oh. Matters from commission, I guess that was the only thing I had questions about, because when he said that, I was like, oh, do we have? I want to make sure everyone's here. Do we have any matters from the commission? Seeing none? We have a motion to adjourn. All right, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Look at that, less than an hour. Bada bing bada bong.